America into the Republic for which your stance, one nation, God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call?
Jeff.
Here.
John.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Brian.
There.
Lexi.
Excused.
Thank you. Uh, need a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. Are we adjusting the agenda? Oh, uh, yeah, I'll need a motion to take no action. How do we do that? Item M.
Item M. It's exactly what you're doing.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries, that will be removed. I'll need an approval or to approve the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I. Alright, I'll forget something there.
Uh, it'll be one of those.
Yeah, it'll be an interesting night.
Alright. Uh, any questions on the consent agenda?
Dave, is there any issues with the liquor license at Dartburg?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I. Motion carries, how do you know?
I got you over here.
Nailed it.
Uh, next up on the agenda is monthly report from P E D C, uh, and then we'll do community heart and soul.
Uh, no report was provided unless Denise has one from P E D C. Okay.
Wait.
Yeah, we gotta go, man.
I did. Yep, I did. Yep, I apologize. Uh, I'll open it up to citizen comment for anything on the agenda this evening.
I think this is probably where, um, if you want to go ahead and start reading those letters, you can. Or if you want to wait until a public.
I would rather do it in public hearing than on a training party.
So does anybody have anything that's on the agenda? You're here for?
You're here for part of the public hearing.
Public hearing, if you're here for the public hearing with, uh, the hands.
Or the public hearing item we'll be doing tonight.
Public hearing nuisances, public hearing.
Undeveloped lots, uh, at the public hearing.
Parking.
Parking. Yep, so we have three public hearings. If anything else on the agenda that you'd like to speak to this evening? Do we have anyone online?
Home number.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, close the citizen comment at this time. Uh, now move on to the P E D C, uh, monthly report, which we have not received one, and I don't believe anyone's here to present one. So we will move on to community heart and soul monthly report.
So some of you attended our community heart and soul celebration on October seventh, and if you didn't, I want to give you one of these.
Sure.
That was.
Thank you. You could with that.
I'll take him to soul.
My help. So this basically breaks down from beginning to end what we've accomplished. Um, and basically that part of the initiative is over. The community heart and soul initiative is over. Um, in the past, it's usually lasted like three years and we were one of the first, um, communities to do it in about a year, which they're, it's not because of anything wonderful we did. They're just. Take credit. Um, they are trying to get it done in a quicker manner. It just drags out otherwise, but these are very, very nice and we will eventually put these in, um, in the, uh, front office so that new families can pick them up or anybody coming into the, uh, city hall can pick them up. Okay, so breakdown of what we've, we've accomplished. Our next, um, endeavor is the endowment fund to help make some dreams a reality. Now, this is a draft, but it is almost perfect. And we meet tomorrow night. It's this group meets tomorrow night and, um, yeah, we'll, we'll get started. It will take probably a year and a half to two years to build the endowment, but we'll end up with a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar endowment for the city of Piasta that will pay out over the next, well, forever, forever, to fund projects that the, uh, residents want. So we're very happy that we're going to be able to do this. This is, this is called the Small Town Drains Initiative. It's through the Community Foundation of Greater Debut. Um, we are building the team and we have a few members to go yet, but then we'll be able to start meeting with, um, with, with people. Um, speaking of meeting with people, we met with Parks and Rec. Brian happened to be there. We met with Parks um, the board last week. We know that one of the things that the residents really want is connectivity, uh, trails, um, sidewalks, and so we met with them to kinda talk about, um, what they foresee happening next. Um, we anticipate that we're going to have some funds probably in the spring just then, and so we wanted to talk to them and, um, kinda get a proactive approach to that. Think that, oh, and the video is done as of tonight, and so I have a high schooler right now working on a YouTube page for community heart and soul YouTube page that we can post them.
Very cool.
Very nice. Want to talk a little bit about the website too?
Oh, sure. So also we need to update the, uh, city website. We need to have a landing page for community heart and soul. Well, I'm meeting with Gigantic probably next week, um, to get that up and running. Um, and then also the P E D C webpage, you'll probably put the same information on that as well. That's run from Augustana, I think. I think theirs is Augustana that does.
Active stuff.
This is A plus work.
Yeah.
Yeah, all good stuff.
Super good work.
Yeah.
Thank your committee for us too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Denise, you still looking for Ford? Members?
Yes. Please.
Uh, next up, we have, uh, community reports, uh, for H R committee. Don't really have anything right now that.
No, I'm still reviewing the job descriptions and we'll take those to the H R when we're done. I've given the, uh, department staff leaders till the end of the month to complete their.
Next up, uh, twenty twenty-five dash fifteen ordinance amending the Title VI Physical Environment, Chapter Five Utilities both of ordinances of the city of Piasta for water and sewer rates, uh, and we are up to approving the third reading and adopting this evening.
Man, what I'd like to do is maybe we find, we've got some people here.
Yes.
Finally.
Yes.
Which is great. Maybe if we could go from start to, start to finish, I remember where we're at today. Yeah, three minute spiel and maybe I can start. You guys can maybe fill me in and if I miss something.
Sounds good.
Yes, so twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we did a water study not only to determine the quality of water, things like that, it was how much water we had in the year and our water towers. At that point, four or five years ago, we were either on the verge or we were not in compliance. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, under capacity.
Under capacity. Um, so over the last four or five years, we've looked at different things, looked at different locations, kinda settled on a location south of town, which is over by the Bard Concrete, right?
Yes.
Um, purchased land or made a, took possession of some land.
Purchased, purchased.
Purchased land, uh, the, the water is purely the rates increases purely because of the purchase of, of the water tower, which is about a six million.
It is, yes.
Six million dollar.
Yes.
Investment. That's going to hopefully service us for a period of time.
Long period of time.
Long period of time. However, as much as we grow, we don't know. So if we're out of compliance in five years ago, we're definitely past that threshold now. So that's where we sit. I wasn't a hundred percent on board of this up till about a month ago, when we had a water break in Gingerbread.
It's huge.
It was there. It was probably broken for hours, not days, hours. Both of our water towers only had eight feet of water left. So if at that point we would have had a catastrophic event, it'd have been, it'd have been ugly. Could have been like Los Angeles in those fires. I mean, we'd had no water in the tanks. So that's the one thing that made me switch on, on the water. The sewer purely is things cost more than it did five years ago. Um, I think I saw in one of the reports fifty-five thousand dollars. Our expenditures have increased approximately fifty-five thousand dollars a year since then.
Just to maintain.
Just to maintain.
Maintain the source.
Just to work it that. That is purely cost to do in business. Um, so that's why we, we find ourselves here, having to make this difficult decision. We don't want to pay more for water or sewer ourselves. I know no one does, but that's the situation we're in.
Yeah, that, yeah, covers.
And the pressure.
Water pressure's not great on the north.
That's why we've done what we've done and that's why we are here approving the, uh, ordinance this evening.
Sure. Would you come up?
Yeah, come up to the outside.
No, I don't. I don't agree with it.
Well, I've lived in Piasta since.
You're saying?
Teenage.
Teenager.
Oh, Sandy Urban.
Okay.
What address? Eight four oh seven Brady Street.
Thanks.
And I've lived in Piasta since ninety-two and our water bill was like twenty bucks then. Of course, time changes. There was five of us then. Now there's two of us and we pay a hundred and ten. Big difference. We can't even drink the water because the water tastes like crap. We buy it. And we feel like did, was there a comparison from Dyersville to Farley to Upworth to Asbury because people around me tell me they pay less? I mean, and so, and we, we have all these companies coming in. I feel like that should lighten our load a little bit. I don't know how the politics work, but I don't see that happening. Everything in Piasta keeps going out.
And costs going up, uh, you know, as John mentioned, and we're, we're, we're going to be funding a new tower, which doesn't have anything to do with Dyersville or Asbury or any other towns. That's just to, to keep up with our growth rate over the last ten years.
Right.
We've been some years double-digit growth rate. So you, you can't provide for a larger population, more businesses without more water available. So that's, that's where we're at. And as far as the, uh, you know, whether uh, businesses are pulling their weight, they are. Yeah, they, they, they are. They are definitely.
You're getting more people in, they're paying more. It doesn't seem to jive.
Well, it, 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 it does if you think about if we're using, just I'll make it real simple, a hundred gallons, and now we're up to, we're using a thousand gallons. So we need to provide a thousand gallons, not a hundred, and so it costs more to provide that thousand gallons than a hundred.
I get that, but I, there's that many more people.
I understand what, yeah, they're, they're paying.
The, the water increase is, when we're clarified this with our, uh, person that takes care of the loans and whatnot for us, is the water increase is a hundred percent because of the water tower.
And it's.
A hundred percent of water.
Capacity expansion.
Yes, yeah, a hundred percent.
Not paying for the water itself, it's paying for the infrastructure to have the water.
Yeah. The sewer is because our costs have gone up, just like everybody else's cost in their houses going up.
And just two comments, because you asked, we did look at comparable. We looked at what the water rates are in the surrounding communities. We're not out of bounds. We're, we're in between. So I mean, if this isn't an unusual rate, like from a base rate standpoint, and your second point about high industrial users and commercial business users, high users of volume pay more. So it's, it's the, they're, they're paying for the use rate plus the, plus the base rate, so. That we do consume more water because we have some of the industry in town. So that is driving some of the capacity need, but so is the growth in the community. I don't know how many people lived here in nineteen ninety-two, but, you know, we're. That's what I mean.
The subdivision's worth it.
In all fairness, that was thirty-three.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
We're all paying more.
But I, I can't see it going now from a hundred
Yeah.
to a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
You know, so it just seems like it's Piasta's grabbing at straws of where can we get money all the time?
This is basic question they give.
These have to fund themselves. So the way these are set up and we'll be getting us, we're going to be asking to get a state revolving loan to fund this. We have statutory requirements we have to meet with revenue inflows that have to match, you know, the debt payment and whatnot. And these S R F loans are like really low interest form, a lot cheaper than you and I could get personally, you know, out on the open market. So we're getting a, we're getting a very favored debt rate. And, um, we have statutory requirements about revenue inflow to meet that debt rate. And we have a statutory requirement as a city to provide water for the people or the businesses that live here. So that's it. This is about the future, the current capacity need and the future growth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to say this in a big back and forth, but I know you, you said you've got something.
Yeah, so.
You can come forward at least, man.
Four ninety-one Lara Drive, Cody Bergfeld. So you guys just said that, uh, you guys are raising this to buy the six million dollar water tower.
Right.
So then when we pay for the water tower, are you guys going to drop our things fifty-seven percent? Actually more like sixty-some percent?
But we actually talked about rate projection with our financial advisor, and I think these rate projections like three years. We talked about whether we could check for further and whatnot. Her advice is, is that to take it in a three to four-year look as you go, we're going to have to evaluate what the costs are and what the community needs and stuff are at that time. If we keep growing.
We don't even know what we're doing yet with this.
What do you mean?
Yeah. We're doing for this, and this is a, this is a three-year, we're paying for the water tower.
Yeah.
And, and it's a three-year investment. Now, where will we be as a city in, in three years, four years?
Hopefully about this size, because this is getting ridiculous. Apparently that, like, if we're not bringing in, if we're letting all these people build and it's not bringing in the money to cover this, then we need to shut it down.
It's a capacity issue.
This is a water capacity issue.
That's because how, how many people are living in this town now?
I didn't mean this to be a big back and forth.
This is gonna be a big back and forth tonight.
What is?
We had a public hearing.
People. Do you guys ever have this many people?
That's why I opened it up to have a conversation.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, but, and then one more thing. You said something about, uh, the state funding maybe?
We're, we're at.
It's a loan.
Did we ask?
Loan.
Oh, a loan.
Yeah, we have.
So can we get a state funding or did anybody look into that?
We look at that all the time.
And we looked at federal grants too. We, we've exhausted grant.
Also, we received a one point five million dollar grant from community funding from the state of Iowa through Ashley Henson's office. So that will help subsidize this, but we will not get that until the project's completed. So when it's completed in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, we'll apply for that. That money will come back and at that time the municipal advisors and staff will look at the rates and there is, there could be a possibility we could roll them back. But we have to look at operating costs.
We're gonna be.
Dollars. Because, so like she said, my sister lives in Farley. Her bills hundred and seven dollars, she said, a month. My coworker lives in, his bill's eighty bucks a month. There was two people there. I understand that and, but there's more people in Farley than me and we're paying the same price right now. So now why, I don't understand why our stuff's gonna go up fifty-some percent.
We're building in infrastructure.
Yeah, so maybe we need to stop giving all these people down here, like all these apartments and stuff. Maybe we need to stop this.
This is really.
Because it's not, it's not, it's not bringing in enough money that the whole city of Piasta has to raise up fifty-seven percent.
This was, we were behind, John mentioned earlier, we were behind five years ago and a lot of those apartments weren't here. So this was something that was going to have to happen, whether these apartments, I mean, it's not about the apartments. I don't want to make it sound like.
I know, but I'm just saying, these are like, they're, they're the ones that came up. They're the biggest ones that came up. I know they're building out by me and everywhere else in Piasta. But I don't get why the revenue's not bringing in or the money's not coming in to cover this. Like, then why? Why weren't we planning, if we knew this two thousand and twenty-one, why, why were we not planning it?
We were. We had our engineer, we've been working on that.
That's how we got to the point we are today.
So now we're just.
We're not small projects.
This is why I didn't move to Aberry because the price of everything.
I'm not sure where I see fifty-seven percent. We're talking about ten percent.
Ten, twelve, fifteen, is that all not twenty, twenty-two percent?
So, what you said fifty?
Yeah, thirty-seven percent plus another twenty. Is that fifty-seven?
What's the other twenty or twenty?
That's super.
Oh, the sewer, they're, yeah, we, we explained that's two different items.
Yeah.
We expanded the infrastructure for sewer. I don't know what, three years ago was before I came on council. We made an investment in, was it tripling the size of the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
And so, and the council at that time was very conservative in their rate setting. In, in between then and now, we've had a huge inflationary period and we have a much larger capacity wastewater, wastewater treatment that is built for the future. And so this is a catch-up on investment and of, uh, addressing the sewer part is a catch-up on investment and then addressing the cost increase to run the wastewater treatment plant, run the pumps, to keep the pumps running to.
So is our bill gonna go down after we paid us off?
Depends on where we sit as a city when we get to the end of these three things. Depends on what the, what the funds require from an expense structure and stuff. The nice thing, I had this conversation with somebody yesterday. We're setting these rates on ourselves too, and if, you know, we have pushed and pulled, nobody up here wants to raise the rates for this. So we've pushed and pulled. We've worked with two different financial advisors and our city engineer's been working on it for three years. You know, so we're, we're doing it to ourselves.
Why are you shaving your head? No.
Oh, I was probably naked. Oh, no, I wasn't shaking.
Yeah.
No, I just, I'm sorry going like that when I said. No.
I don't like it. I don't like it either.
Well, this, I like, that's like night and day difference. This ain't like a ten percent.
That's right.
Deal. This is like big money now.
Yep, it is.
So that's why you got all these people here today. Guarantee you ninety, ninety percent of these people are here because of this water and sewer.
Thank you.
Nice. He knows the drill, Alex.
Yeah, I know. Alex Stewart, um, seven five Bertrich. If you, since we do have a lot of people here, I think, could you just look into the process of like first reading, second reading, third reading for these types of things? I think to help educate people, I've been coming to these meetings for you.
So it starts with a public hearing.
And I think everybody could benefit from that because we see a lot of like Facebook messages like, oh, I can't believe they're voting on this tonight. I think now.
Definitely.
Thank you.
So it starts out as a public hearing and then after the public hearing closes, we can either take the first reading or wait for more public input. Once the first reading goes, then we, if everybody approves it, majority approves it, it goes to a second and a third. Um, there's chances where you could waive it, but obviously on big stuff, you don't want to do that because you want people's public input. That answer your question or?
Yeah, I'm just trying to educate everyone.
Probably the minimum.
Meeting, but there was nobody here on.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, I don't know what, what else. I mean, I know everybody says we're not telling them, we're not telling them. We, we, we do post it on Facebook. It is in the newsletter.
Yeah.
The agendas are on, in the, uh, city, uh, Facebook page.
They're downstairs.
Uh, and they're posted downstairs physically, uh, you know, on our website. So it's, everything goes to the newspaper. Yeah, I, I mean, short of, you know, and I always give John a hard time and tell him he's gonna go knock door to door. Um, but we're, we, we aren't, that doesn't, that's not feasible either. So, uh, we're, we're getting it out there, I believe, as, as much as I think we can.
Not for me.
Um, uh, not more or less than anything else. We're never, we are absolutely never trying to hide anything. Uh, we invite you to come to every meeting. I know that, that would be a lot. Uh, we have a work session, uh, the Wednesday before the second Tuesday of the month. I know that sounds confusing, but sometimes the second Tuesday isn't right after the first Wednesday. Anyway, and that's a very open forum where we, we kick all the ideas around. We've been talking about this in a lot of meetings prior to, uh, setting the public hearing, uh, and then moving through the, through the stages. Uh, and so you'll see we have some three, three public hearings tonight, which is open discussion on those items. And then we will move to first reading, second reading, and third reading. And occasionally, not to confuse the issue further, if we feel it's something that everybody's like, yeah, that's fine, we will potentially waive the second and third reading to adopt the ordinance quickly. Thanks for asking for that, Alex. I, I, that really gives us an opportunity to kind of lay it out there for everybody.
And if there's any, ever, ever any questions, our email, our phone number are, is online on our website.
And my doors are open.
Yeah.
Something this big is, you know, six to twelve months of active discussion and multiple meetings to even get to this point. So we've had it in a few work sessions. Yes, yeah, no, it's, it's, I get it, but it's a long process.
That's kind of why I wanted to.
Yep.
Allow some.
Perfect.
Typically, we're not, it's here, we're just gonna vote. We have the discussion at the public hearing, but tonight, because we had a lot of people, let's, let's open it up. Let's, let's, let's tell our side, our side of the story of how we got here. You guys understand, I understand, I know the frustration and I, I see it. But this is how we got here.
I guess if anybody in the room doesn't know, there is a tool on the city website. Enter the specifics from your own bills and get a projection of what these changes would do to your, your own bill. So we felt that that was really important for transparency too, so people could model what these changes would mean for them.
All right, with that, um, I will ask, uh, if there's any further discussion from council and then a motion to approve the third meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the third reading.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries and now I need a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, twenty twenty-five dash sixteen ordinance amending the zoning code of ordinance meadowscaping in the city of Piasta.
Yeah, if anybody wants to come. Just in case.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask since we've kind of done this with the water. I'll go ahead and open it up if anyone has any comments about the meadowscaping. Oh, not tasked tonight, but that's okay.
Want to hear from people.
I'm here for people.
Yep.
All right, well, I will need a motion then to approve the third reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the third reading of the ordinance amending zoning cord code, uh, related to meadowscaping in the city of Piasta.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. I will now need a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Uh, next on our agenda is a public hearing, hearing for ordinance amending Title VII Traffic Code, parking regulations, parking for certain purposes.
Mayor, this might be a good opportunity to let Chief Comer talk a little bit, why, how we got here.
Yeah, so we, uh, took some complaints about vehicles being parked for sale on parks and in the city parking lots. And so I brought you guys, for your guys' attention to see if you guys wanted to make an ordinance that doesn't allow vehicles for sale in the parks, because I just don't believe vehicles should be for sale in any park. I think it could, you know, with a lot of vehicles in the parks, you know, we're gonna have a lot of traffic in the new park or by Calio, um, that we probably shouldn't allow that. And that's how we got here.
Thanks, Chief.
I need a motion to open the public hearing of this ordinance.
I made a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries, uh, if anyone would like to address the council or the chief would probably answer questions if anybody wanted to come up and talk about this ordinance. Uh, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Next item then is twenty twenty-five dash seventeen ordinance amending Title VII Traffic Code Chapter seventy-one Parking Regulations Section seventy-one point two eight Parking For Certain Purposes, which is, this is the ordinance we just had the public hearing about.
Mayor, this is a really good example to explain that this is one of those ordinances that he talked about not being high level, that it just, it seems like it's a, a good plan to maybe waive the second and adopt the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
What a motion, Mr.? I'd need a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading. Title VII Traffic Code Chapter seventy-one Parking Regulations.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. And that was approving the first reading, correct? Uh, I'll ask the council this time if they would like to waive the second and third reading on this ordinance. And if so, I'll need a motion.
I think this one's gonna be pretty non-controversial. I, I tend to like to have it out there longer in case somebody wants to come and speak. This one feels like it's gonna be pretty non-controversial.
Okay.
Is that your motion, Brian?
Oh, yes. Chief, do you see any concerns if we wait? But we can still manage it. I'd prefer to let it go one more reading, just a little time for, for the information to get out in the public in case somebody wants to come speak to this.
Agreed. We want that. Uh, next, I will need a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance to amend Title Nine Nuisances To Define Undeveloped Lots And Mowing Requirements.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to amend Title Nine Nuisances To Define Undeveloped Lots.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries and the public hearing is open. Would anyone like to address the council about the ordinance about undeveloped lots and mowing requirements?
Uh, Deb McDonough, nine six seven Redford Lane. I guess, can you help me define what are you talking on undeveloped lots requiring? I have one that has many, many treats that came forward. Next, Brian.
I think the way we were looking at this was, uh, we have our mowing requirement for developed lots. Where we have a max height before the city will get involved and let people know they need to mow. And with undeveloped lots being not a manicured trimmed lawn, the idea was to allow that lot to not have to be mowed to that tenth requirement uh, until it became eighty percent?
Seventy.
Seventy percent developed. So it's, it's just a way to allow developers to not have to spend a lot of time mowing when there really isn't much to mow except for weeds and stuff. And it's not, it's not a manicured lawn. So the idea was to allow, uh, more of a variance for the developers, uh, with a lot, uh, such as yourself.
Okay, this is mainly a.
Which lot are you, which lot are you speaking to?
It's by Jason Byrds. It's like across from the park. And it's got, behind, it'd be Brian's backyard, basically, right, Brian?
Adjunct backyard. It's all wooded.
Yeah, it's, it's more a wooded area then. It's, it's, it's geared toward a subdivision who's developing. And they have a couple of lots maybe that are being worked on.
And everything else is.
When everything else, you know, I'm next door to you, but my, my lawn is cut and you've got weeds growing because you don't have it developed.
Yeah.
That was kind of the focus.
Clarify it because we have had.
Thanks, Deb.
Yeah, honestly, we're trying to make it both visually pleasing in the city and a little bit less of a burden to our developers. So we're trying to kind of have a common sense approach to, once it's pretty much developed, then we want it mowed to city standards. When it's pretty much undeveloped, we're gonna allow more variance.
If no one else is, uh, looking to approach on this, uh.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. I'll need a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve Title Nine Nuisances And Def- Define Undeveloped Lots And Mowing Requirements.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. I'll again ask the council if they are interested in waiving the second and third reading on this ordinance.
I would like to go through the regular process on this. Are you guys?
Yeah, I think, yeah, at least more. Yep.
Give developers a chance to respond. All motors a chance to respond.
All right, next I'll need a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance, uh, to allow laying heads within the city of Piastah.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing. For ordinance to allow laying heads within the city of Piastah.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. We are in the public hearing. And if anyone would like to approach the council and discuss this ordinance.
Read those letters.
I was gonna let the people that are here talk first, and then I will read some letters that we received. Name and address, sir.
Mark Eckhoff, seven seven six Piastah Street. Piastah, Iowa. I think it's important for you all to know, first of all, that I've been a resident since February when I got married. It's been fun. Uh, so twenty-four years in Minnesota, a lot of, a lot of fun there. Um, twenty-four years in Lake Minnetaka, twenty-five miles west of the Twin Cities. I say that because I had an experience there owning a significant, uh, piece of property in Lake Minnetaka. And as that, uh, twenty-four years developed, I had something that happened interesting for me and I wanted to share that with you to understand that when you make decisions about what's today, that you have a long-term vision of what it is for a property owner and how that affects the property owner. So imagine a beautiful neighborhood, um, Lake Minnetaka, you can imagine it's a lake, so it's pretty pristine. Every house that's on my cul-de-sac is fabulous, manicured lots, significant house, one after another. And then all of a sudden, there's this house next to my house that was a shit show. And I say that because the guy went to the state of Minnesota and requested that he'd become a, uh, natural habitat. So starts out with not mowing the lawn, starts out with every invasive type of weed you can imagine coming into that lawn, uh, down trees, uh, varmints that nested there. I mean, you can imagine everything possible. And then you've got your beautiful house and you're living next to this and you're spending an enormous amount of time trying to keep your lawn from getting invasive crap in your yard. And so was the other guy next to us. And you couldn't do anything about it because it was somebody's idea that this was a good idea to do in the proper city limits versus being out in the country. It doesn't matter. They don't care, but I did because I lived there and it was really a problem. And I just want you to think about that when you're talking about, you know, bringing in things that don't belong in the city because of what we expect in terms of being city dwellers. So I say that and I want to read something to you, uh, to accent, add some sound on that, which is, um, I wrote this and I sent it in as an email, but I'll, I'll just express my strong opposition to the ordinance that would permit keeping chickens, laying chickens within the city limits. So I understand that two residents that have recently advocated for such a change, I think my civic duty is to represent the greater good for the city council to consider also the broader implications as I just described as an event. As we all are Piastah citizens that would care about our city, let's not forget that our city is affluent, well-maintained community that prides itself in cleanliness, order, high standard of living. For us to introduce livestock into a residential neighborhood undermines our love for our community and our city values. Chickens are not pets, they're farm animals. The presence, it invites noise, order, predators, sanitation concerns, and are incompatible with the character of our city. They're not a pet, a pet that's kept similar to a dog or cat that are kept outdoors. I would think that the operational strain that would place on our already overstretched city departments cannot be ignored. I have heard the public works is, uh, understaffed and focused on essential infrastructure.
Yeah, you tell them.
Um, maintenance. Also know that the city staff managing the increased demands and transparency permitting the resident services is also an issue. Uh, police department is tasked with public safety, not policing poultry. Can you imagine the first visit from Mike, our police chief regarding chickens not, uh, that are unruly and need to be addressed?
Unruly chickens.
So, uh, I think diverting time and resources, um, should be, uh, thought about because if you're going to enforce chicken coops setbacks and mediate neighborhood disputes over chickens and irresponsible use of taxpayer-funded personnel. Furthermore, what's next? Is it bees? Is it goats? Is it a pot-billy pig that I heard about in one of the other communities? Um, you know, the U.S. Agricultural Department defines livestock as, you know, cattle, sheep, horses, and other domesticated animals that are raised on a, on a farm. Um, not in the city, right? Once we open the door to livestock, uh, residential zones, we invite a cascade of other niche requests that further burden the staff and dilutes the standards that make Piastah a desirable place to live. Zoning exists to protect the entirety of our neighborhoods, not to accommodate every individual whim. So, um, I'm also surprised because I think everybody here I've met before and considering very intelligent people. And I think it's interesting that you circumvented your own process by suspending the higher, uh, the, the hearing with the Board of Adjustments to rule on the ordinance violation that you already have. Um, I think Piastah leads with intention, not imitation. If we allow chickens, it should be because of our standards of our, strengthens our community, not because we're afraid to say no. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Will you interact on that?
This is for you, Mark. Mark, I just, I thank you for sharing that. I just want to make one comment about the Board of Adjustment decision. I think we had enough citizen input, we thought we wanted to evaluate an ordinance before we ruled on something and then came back later and put together an ordinance. So if for some reason the ordinance doesn't pass and we end up in the same place, I would imagine the want to have hands are probably gonna go through the Board of Adjustment process. I just wanted to clarify that. We were trying to circumvent our own process. Nothing's been passed. This is the public hearing to evaluate approving an ordinance that would allow it. So citizens approached and we thought, rather than put them through the Board of Adjustment thing, if the city council, council wanted to evaluate building an ordinance and discussing an ordinance, we thought we should do that before we forced somebody through that process. So that's where we're at. That process will still be there.
I personally didn't have a choice on my neighbor's, uh, requirement to become a natural habitat.
Yeah.
So you got a pretty significant piece of property and then you go to sell it twenty-four years later and you built your whole land. It's there and now you're now dealing with this and there's nothing you can do. And I just can think that that should be given some significant consideration as to what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to approach the council about the ordinance?
Jane Glundacker, seven eighteen Walnut Ridge Street. Um, I think the council's well aware of who I am. I've been to a couple of the, uh, work sessions. Um, obviously I am one of the residents that has chickens. Um, and thus the reason that this is, is at the city council meeting. Um, I do appreciate your comments, sir, and I, and I can understand those concerns, um, that you addressed to the council and to the public here. Uh, I think that a lot of that may have to do, has to do with, with the responsible individuals on that. It was a very bad experience that you had with your neighbor. Us asking to have chickens in Piastah is not trying to inflict anything on, on anybody else. Um, if the city council goes forward with this and has further sessions, I would be more than willing to ask any of my neighbors to come um, and comment on that. We have, none of my neighbors around have any problem with it. I think as a responsible owner, and that's what the city council has talked about and is trying to, trying to address as well. Um, if you're, you maintain their, their condition and keep them, they're not any different, any louder than, than a dog. They're, they're actually quieter decibels than a dog is. Um, our chickens are well-kept and well-cared-for. So I do thank the city council for, uh, you know, taking the time to bring this forward. I, I, I thank Annette for her efforts in, uh, writing, writing everything up. Um, anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Charlie Duar, uh, six oh five Allen Ridge Street. Really just to echo what James is saying and, you know, to similarly address what your concerns are. I think with the right guidelines that are kind of put in this ordinance, um, keeping a high level of care for the chickens and maintaining a certain level of standard for, um, cleanliness and kind of how they're kept is really important. And that's something that, um, I think this, again, you know, the reading really can address. And um, some were more than interested to hear if there are other concerns that aren't addressed or anything like that. I'm also one of the families that has, um, chickens that this has been addressed with. So um, I appreciate you guys too, obviously, hearing this out and listening to kind of the involvement from the community and similar with neighbors or bringing people that are around me. I'm happy to um, have them advocate or have signatures lined up or anything like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jordan Griffin. I live at seven three seven Willow Ridge, Drew Park. I also just wanted to show my support in one of the ordinance. Um, when we moved to Piastah in twenty nineteen, there was no ordinance against chickens at the time. And so we, we got them and we cared for them and um, there then COVID hit and there was, you know, a lot of food shortages in places and and a scarcity idea and not knowing where your food was coming from. And so I think a lot of, um, the whole homesteading act and gardening and having a few chickens and being able to provide for your families too is a, is a big thing, um, that so, that some people strive for. And chickens, uh, some people see as a good part of that. Um, and the other thing I wanted to say was when we had them, we have a lot of neighbor kids on our street and they would come to our house at four o'clock because they knew we collected eggs at four o'clock. And they were so excited to go down, collect eggs with the chickens. They hang out in the run, they pet them all, they learn to pick them up, they learn their names. And it was a really good time for them and it was a learning experience for how to care for a chicken or an animal that's not a dog or a cat. And they had a great time with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike Han, I'm at eighty-two eighty Calbridge. Um, so I'll start with, I don't have chickens. I don't have any desire for chickens unless they come in a bucket with eleven herbs. Um, that being said, that being said, is what I do walk the neighborhood. Um, I was honestly surprised. I've lived in Piastah for about thirteen years now. Now I'm surprised at the number of people in my, I live near who have chickens. Because I don't hear them. I drive by, I really don't. I don't notice. I don't feel like it's a nuisance. Um, if this was a conversation where we're having a nuisance, I would be, yeah, let's discuss how we solve that. Um, but if I, I kind of take the, the live and let live, uh, on this. Um, so I just wanted to throw my support as somebody who doesn't have chickens or want chickens, just throw my support behind the people who do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Lawson, seven fifteen Willow Ridge. I'm Jordan's neighbor. And I just want to throw my support behind the chickens. I don't have them either. But I take my granddaughter down there every time she comes to my house and she loves them. I've never heard a chicken ever. So I think having responsible citizens, I believe that it should be something that should be allowed. So I just want to throw my support behind that.
Carol.
Thank you.
Carol, as a neighbor to somebody that has chickens, do you notice a smell or odor from anything?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. Third time's a charm.
Uh, Eric Goseman, uh, Calbridge. I want to just bring up a few things on chickens. Um, as somebody mentioned, the ordinance you're proposing as well, we're in comparison to some of the. As somebody mentioned, the ordinance you're proposing as well written, it's a risk into some of the communities. And there was comments made about cities and and stuff like that, but I just want to highlight for you if you didn't already know. Dubuque allows chickens and ducks no limit. Asbury allows six hens. F Worth allows six hens. Those are the communities around us. We're kind of in Iowa, which has got a very heavy rural background. And prior to recent times, and I don't know if it was documented, when I used to call and talk to Karen at the office. That was always put out. I don't know if it was an ordinance. I can't find the documents that we're allowed to have six hen. Until maybe that was a way to do business, but until this ordinance was written to get to restrict the hens. It was always allowed. We were always allowed to have six hens in town. So I understand there's an influence of new people from various areas, new neighborhoods. Well, there's still some of us from the older neighborhoods. And like other people have mentioned, I think the ordinance is well written on the hygiene concerns, the noise concerns. If you don't know much about chickens and I live across the street and there were chickens in the yards before. From people who moved out. Chickens go to bed when the sun goes down and they don't come up till the sun goes out. It's the roosters that cause the problems. You don't really hear a chicken. I hear dogs early in the morning. I hear dogs later and I said, that's part of life. The noise a chicken makes would just be the same noise we get from dogs being out on the yards tied up, you know, in evenings and mornings. So I think the fact is. Consider giving it a go. It's a good ordinance. You can always change it down the road. If you find it becomes a problem, that's your power as a city council. You have an inspection plan. I suggest you consider giving it a shot because we had it before. It's not a new thing. Some, the ordinance got changed and I know that I was unaware of it. I know Charlie didn't know about it at all either and that's on us. It was probably published, but there was always that chicken presence in town. And like other people have mentioned, with the price of eggs and stuff like that, it's starting to grow more of where people. In neighborhoods are having chickens. It's more about how you keep them than the idea of them. Thank you.
Great. What's your address?
Calbridge, eight one four one.
Oh, why is that?
I have a question.
Can you state your name and your address?
Are you still there?
They're muted.
Yeah, they're both muted.
Which ones?
Both, both of them.
They can hear you if you tell them to unmute their deal.
Can you unmute yourself?
The gentleman who had a question, can you unmute yourself and ask your question for us? Yeah, well, if he comes back around, will. I do have some. Emails that were sent to the city that requested to be part of the public hearing this evening. Ryan Winkleman to the city council, Piazza Iowa, writing in regards to the upcoming discussion vote on. His address. Five twenty nine Maple Ridge. Discussion vote on changing the ordinance for allowing chickens to reside within the city limits. I am vehemently opposed to this ordinance. I have personally witnessed coyotes within the city limits. I feel that having chickens in coops outside in the backyards poses a risk to small children and small animals. The chickens will act as bait for wild animals of all kinds and if properly contained will actually probably not be harmed. This is precisely my point. Predators will be attracted but be unable to obtain their meat meal and will turn their attention elsewhere. We have an invisible fence to keep our animals in and it does a fine job. However, this will not keep anything out. This will pose a risk to my and all other animals in the same situation across the city. I ask, does the city plan on setting aside a fund to cover the lawsuits that will happen from murdered pets when it happens? Additionally, who's to say these animals won't get bold enough to attack small children at play when the chance presents itself? I know my neighborhood has quite a few small children playing in the yards while parents are watching predators are quick. Is this a worst case scenario? Yes, but is it a risk the city is willing to take on at this time? A quick Google search will show that coyotes have and will attack pets in Iowa. Des Moines and Northwestern Iowa have both reported attacks this year, June and March of this year. Sorry, June and March of this year. I do not think there are any real benefits to the city for allowing chickens. And I feel with even just a slight chance, the drawbacks are too much of a risk. Our dogs are part of our family. They live with us. They sleep with us. They're sad when we are gone and excited when we are back. Chickens are livestock. They produce eggs and meat. They're not pets. I know if a coyote or a fox were to harm any of my pets, I would be looking to those who allowed it to happen for answers. Thank you for your time, Ryan Winkleman. I also have from Linda Murphy. A Piazza Linda Murphy, twenty six hundred Dodge Street. Well, that's her office. That's her office. They don't have, oh, sorry, five forty seven Maple Ridge. A Piazza resident has submitted a request to the city council seeking the repeal. Or amendment of the existing ordinance prohibiting the keeping of chickens or hens within the city. While I understand that egg production is an important issue right now, I'm concerned about what raising chickens or hens might attract. And how it could affect my family and our outdoor pets. I believe it would not be a good idea to overturn the current ordinance as doing so could negatively affect our everyday quality of life here in Piazza. Although this issue does not impact me directly at the moment, since my neighbors do not currently raise chickens or hens. I am concerned about the possibility of someone moving in nearby and doing so. That's not something I would want near my property. And I have another one, Jordan, from Jordan and Alex Griffin. And Jordan already had talked to us, but this is a little more thorough, so I want to make sure I got this out there for them.
What's his address?
His address is seven thirty seven Willow Ridge North in Piazza. Mayor Russell Fob and members of the council. The subject is support for ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen permitting laying hens. I am writing as a resident of Piazza to voice my strong support for ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen. Which would allow a limited number of laying hens within single family residential zones. Under the proposed permit system, this thoughtful ordinance strikes an excellent balance between promoting environmental sustainability. Family education and community responsibility while maintaining Piazza's high standards of cleanliness and neighborhood harmony. By the proposed ordinance deserves approval. The draft ordinance includes all key safeguards to protect public health and neighborhood quality. Limit hen ownership to six hens per property with roosters prohibited, ensuring quiet neighborhoods. Requires permits renewed every two years and inspections by city officials, ensuring accountability. Establishes clear setbacks and humane care requirements. Prohibits commercial sales, slaughtering and composting of waste, keeping the practice small scale and sanitary. Environmental and community benefits. One, waste reduction and soil health. Laying hens naturally convert kitchen scraps and weeds into eggs and nutrient rich manure that when properly handled can improve soil fertility. Reduce reliance on synthetic. Fertilizers. Pest control and reduce chemical use. Hens forage on insects and weed seeds, minimizing the need for chemical pesticides. Lower carbon footprint. Local egg production shortens supply chains and cuts transportation emissions associated with large scale industrial farms. Educational and development benefits for children, allowing hens provides Piazza's youth with hands on opportunities to understand biology, responsibility. And sustainable living. Children who help feed and care for hens gain practical lessons in ecology and food literacy. Studies show that animal care fosters empathy, responsibility and emotional well being. A practical balanced policy ordinance twenty twenty five demonstrates that Piazza can adopt modern sustainability measures. Without compromising neighborhood integrity. The city's permit, inspection and setback requirements ensure this practice will be managed safely and responsibly. Conclusion is approving this ordinance will encourage sustainable local food practices. Provide families and children with valuable educator experiences. Maintain Piazza's high standards for safety, cleanliness and civility. Other cities around us allow laying hens, including Dubuque and Cedar Rapids. If these bigger cities can find a way to allow residents to keep hens responsibly, there's no reason a small town in the middle of everything can't. I urge the city council to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen as written or with only minor adjustments. This forward thinking measure will enhance Piazza's reputation as a community that values sustainability, education and family lives. Respectfully, Alex and Jordan Griffin, Piazza residents. I hope I did that justice. It was a lot. I used to hear him to talk just not using other people's words, so. So did we get the gentleman back online at all?
Mistake.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else want to address this time?
I actually have something I'd like to say. April Zodina, seven eighteen Walnut Ridge Street. I am the also the owner of chickens. I have six chickens. My chickens are my pets and my children's pets. I know every one of their names. I get up every single morning with those chickens. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, so I know every one of those chickens' names. They hear me come out in the morning and they are excited to see me. They come to me. They know whether it's time to eat or get pet. I can, I will hold my chickens. I have pictures with my children, a ten year old and a thirteen year old who love these chickens. I mean, they go out there every day with me. If I'm not home from work yet, they go out, they collect their eggs, they clean up after them. We just winterized our chickens and it is just, I mean, they're so happy. We have a little area they can come out and run. We sit out there with our chickens. They will come and sit in our laps on their own. We don't have to go and force them to. They like to be held and pet and talked to and they're quite funny. And my girls have learned so much and as well as their friends come home from school with them and they play with our chickens. And they learn how to pick them up or whatever. They like to watch them fly. My dogs don't even bother the chickens. My chickens chase my dogs sometimes. They started out in my home, so they know my home. They will come and follow me up onto the deck and. Scratch at the door because they want to visit or anything like that. We go outside. Do we allow our chickens to come and roam around inside my house? No. Sometimes I would though, you know, that's just me. I've had my chickens plenty of time sitting in my lap in the rocking chair or, you know, outside and things like that. So as far as chickens being pets, yes, they are pets and I love my chickens, all six of them things as much as I love my dogs and my cat. My dogs actually make more of a mess than my chickens. And they're just two little dogs and when my son's dog comes over, that thing makes a huge mess. But he's a big German shepherd, so it's bound to happen. But chickens are pets and they are great education for children. And for ourselves, I've learned so much. I get my eggs. Everybody at work is excited to hear how many eggs I got, whether they're laying or not and whatnot and. I don't feel that they are any less a pet. That's my feeling. They're no less a pet than a dog or a cat. Or just a bird that does live in your house and in a cage and throw stuff everywhere. You know, and those are considered pets. You got parrots, cockatoos, whatever it is, it's still a bird. But that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just one question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are people not aware that there's an ordinance that you can't have these in the city of Piazza?
I believe they are.
So then why is it that they just did it? Because if they're willing to just do it, then we're supposed to say that we change ordinance and they're willing to do what they want to do anyway. That's the question that I have is that we have an ordinance today. We didn't enforce the ordinance. Now we're questioning ourselves as to whether or not we should have and change the ordinance. They're not going to follow the new one anyway because they were proven that they not following the one you had announced.
I believe these were grandfathered in from when it was changed, to my knowledge. Is that right, Mike?
Yes, there wasn't. Do you have chickens now?
At one point, there was no, there was no ordinance addressing livestock. So I don't know what the date was. We we addressed it. It said no livestock, but the people that had it.
Could have tried to the twenty.
Continue to have.
They just couldn't replace them.
Correct. So that's where we're addressing it at this point. Thank you.
I have a question too, please. In the previous years, has a coyote, have you all ever been notified that a coyote killed a chicken?
That'd be a chief.
That's my knowledge.
I mean, there's deer in my yard. We got an ordinance against not having deer in the yard. I'm just curious. We got coyotes. Anyway, I just asked, just curious. Sorry.
Anyone else? All right, I'll need a motion then to close this public hearing. I will make a motion, close a public hearing.
I'll second.
Right, nine.
Go tonight.
Motion carries. The public hearing is closed, so the item on the agenda now is the ordinance to allow laying hens within the city of Piazza. And I'll ask the council if they have any further discussion amongst themselves. Yeah, I mean, I I came into this meeting today thinking, no. Primary concern was. I never thought of it, but the letter was the. The coyotes coming in and. You know, kind of like. Mr. Winkleman had mentioned, never thought of that now. I don't know, is it, is it a real threat? Is it not?
I don't see it as, I don't see it. I don't ignore the threat than anything else is.
Do we leave dogs outside? Do we leave dogs outside overnight?
I know my mother in law has chickens. She doesn't live at Piazza and she has more. Issues with raccoons trying to eat her chickens than coyotes and she lives out off Old Highway surrounded by woods. And she has cameras on her chickens. There's never been a coyote that's come up to it, but she has had issues with raccoons trying to come up. And eat your chickens and dig under the fence and get to them.
I would have said three or four weeks ago, I was pretty much like, this feels like a no brainer. We should just structure it so people that want to be responsible can do it. And then as feedback and stuff's been coming into me the last few weeks, I'm, I think these are good points. The first six months I was here, the first time I walked in the NICC nature space and got back in that tree area, I scared out a coyote. The reality is they're here. They've been here for a long time. They're around the edges of town. I've never heard of any concerns. I had a friend that lived in Arizona that had a coyote that attacked a kid in a park. But they don't have anything to eat and the ones around here seem like they have a lot to eat, so that's just a comment. I I think that's a valid concern to some. I just don't see it as high risk. The pieces I'm concerned with is town versus agriculture. You know, what are people's expectations when they move in? People that live here, live in a town, it's actually kind of growing into a small city. But we've said, community heart and soul, we want to preserve this small town feel. And so to me, small town feel includes things like accommodating people's different wishes with their property within reason. I am sensitive to Mark's argument about property values because I owned a home in Dubuque County across from somebody who did not maintain their house. And their yard and it affected our property values, so I I get those concerns. I think they're valid concerns. I'm concerned about the impact on city staff, but I think if we can control with a structured ordinance. And we have people that are responsible owners and it's not going to be as a big deal. And then I think Eric's comment is, I think is well placed. We've always been a chicken town. I mean, it sounds kind of strange, but we've been a really small rural town. At one point, not twenty years ago, this was a wide spot in the road with a couple hundred people. We've always been kind of a rural feeling community, so I feel like they've already always been here. If if we're going to continue to grow, we need to structure it in a responsible way, so that's why I advocated for. Pulling it offline and seeing if we could structure an ordinance, so. I walked in tonight being undecided. I'm not sure where I'm at yet. I'd like to hear just the other council members speak to it before we vote, first of all. I think we took a lot of time in our work session and made sure that this ordinance was very well thought out. I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot. The waste is taken care of. The nuisance has been addressed. I mean, I don't see where, and neighbors have shared, the neighbors that live around it share, they don't hear them. They don't cause a problem. I mean, I didn't know we had as many hen owners in town as we evidently do. And I think Piazza has been a nice place to to live. One other comment, the slippery slope comment, I will never approve an ordinance for a cow or a goat or a horse or whatever. I mean, I think there are, there are clear delineations. There are some that are truly livestock and this seems like it's one of those in between things. Kind of become, you know, a homeowner preference thing.
Yeah, and and I'll just speak for myself. I personally would not, again, want chickens next to me, just. Just how I would feel and I get the argument that your neighbors currently are behind you one hundred percent. But if somebody moves into a neighborhood that doesn't have chickens and now can't put chickens in. Now, if that neighborhood normally would be anti chicken, now they've got somebody who has the right to put chickens in. When they are not personally. When they are not personally, so. The other argument to, all the neighbors are fine with it, and I understand you, you guys have done that. Um, but somebody who would come into another area of town that doesn't have chickens and they don't want chickens. Would come in and start putting chickens in, and I live there. If somebody came in and bought property next to mine and put chickens in. Regardless of how goo- well-behaved, how all the things that have been brought for them, I personally would not. I still wouldn't want chickens next door. It's just, that's my personal preference. That's, that's my. So that's, that's where my concern is, is a neighborhood that is very happy not having chickens. And they're happy where they are, somebody buying property and bringing chickens in after the fact. So.
I feel like we've done our due diligence in writing an ordinance that accommodates everybody. It accommodates the smell, it accommodates cleanliness. I personally. I think we've done our due diligence with it.
Well, then at this point, I'll ask for a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance allowing laying hens within the city of Piazza.
I'll second.
Brian, no.
Justin, I.
John, no.
Jeff, I.
Motion does not carry. That it's a tie, but it doesn't carry without unmajority of the let's see. And Lexi's not here. I don't break ties. I don't break ties. I'll ask, Annette, where does this leave this item?
Um, you've already had the public hearing, so we can bring it back to the next meeting and have a first reading at that point.
Sounds good. Basically table it.
Well, just no action.
Next up, we have resolution setting public hearing on the proposed drawing specifications, budget, and form of contract for the Kelly Oaks Park Pavilion.
Would either Brian or Justin like to explain to the public here what the, what the purpose is behind this? Since you two represent the park board.
So we've been working with, uh, the parks committee and. Uh, our city engineers, uh, to design a pavilion for Kelly Oaks Park. Uh, it's opinion of the parks committee that Kelly Oaks Park is our marquee park and we've been working hard the last couple of years to get it developed. With the paved trail in there, cleaning up the, the dead trees and getting things, uh, planted and ready to go. Uh, we're upgrading the, or. Ready to basically reinstituting the disc golf course. And, uh, it's been the desire of the city that we would have a marquee park where we could have a pavilion that's indoor-outdoor, that's rentable. The design that's put in place on this one is, uh, you know, floor-to-ceiling garage doors that can be opened up. So you're opened up to the park. Uh, when they're closed, they're translucent. See the park and, and experience the beauty of the, of the, of the park itself. Um, it'll be something that can be a rentable asset for the city. It'll be the kind of thing that people could have receptions and. Those kinds of things in it would fol- follow park hours. But, uh, to me, this is the, the marquee kind of thing for our marquee park, uh, to finish it. The playground equipment's gone over really well and this is the last finishing piece. Honestly, the city council's been working really hard the last two to three years to figure out how to fund this thing and how to get to this point. And, um, we hear all the time about parks and trails, and I think community heart and soul has validated. They heard all the town time about parks and trails. So finishing Kelly Oaks has been our primary, our primary goal. Getting a sidewalk to Kelly Oaks so everybody in the city can walk to their marquee park. That is a high priority that we're working on right now. And, um, you know, these things come over time as piece by piece. But, uh, it appears that we can, we can, we can fund this, and I think that this will be something that the city of Piazza is very proud of. So, keep my comments.
So I need a motion to set the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November eleventh.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Step, we have twenty twenty-five dash seventy-one, resolution amending fees, adding sidewalk permit fee. Uh, this resolution will add a twenty-five dollar fee for, uh, someone putting a sidewalk in. So that's just a permit fee to. What's that?
It's like a formality.
Formality, yes.
We want to cover administrative costs. So that's what we're trying to do.
Partially.
Partial. We want to offset administrative costs for the people that are using city services. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution amending fees to add the sidewalk permit fee of twenty-five dollars.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, we have resolution approving the city of Piazza pursuing a grant opportunity. With the higher department of transportation through their revitalization, Iowa sound economy rise for road construction of cap drive.
This is a big one, uh, for cap drive. This is an opportunity that we've been working on for a few years. Um, happy to say we're here. Looks like we're going to be able to get it funded fifty-fifty, which is going to take a huge burden off of the city. Um, and the residents. So this is just, again, a formality that we need to have this resolution passed. As part of the application, uh, packet.
Excellent, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the rise grant application.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, we have a resolution adopting the code of ethics for elected officials in the city of Piazza. Uh, this came out of our goal setting, uh, so that there is a, uh, set of rules. Uh, that, uh, anyone who's elected official within the city must follow, uh, as part of their being in office.
I see the resolution out here, but we didn't actually post the code of ethics so public can see it. I missed that. I mean, we should. It's an excellent document. I think it's great. It codifies the way we should behave as elected public officials. I think it'd be, it's something that makes a lot of sense. I, I, I've read it. I'm just getting heard that the public can see what it is.
I will add it to board base, so it's out there. And I will add it to the resident section if you'd like, or I can add it underneath city council. Probably, yeah. Section for it, yeah.
I make a motion, uh, to adopt the resolution, to adopt the code of ethics as, as, uh. Presented, uh, for elected officials in the city of Piazza.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. I see we also have a note to review policy in November. At this time, I will open up, uh, for citizen comment about anything not on the agenda this evening. Anyone who'd like to approach the council?
Um, I just, and I, this is the first one I ever came to. So we live over by Gander Bread. And my kids, they're going to probably start walking to school in two years. Obviously, you know, like that road is not, that's Piazza Street. Um, from. The railroad tracks to. There're like one, um. Lot there that's not, doesn't have a sidewalk. Yes, on Brady Street. Could we look into putting a sidewalk there so these kids don't have to cross the road like that? Huge, like, there's a, that road is nuts in the mornings and afternoon.
If I remember correctly, that was put in that way because of the. Crossing, the crossing railroad. So they.
It's off to the side.
But you gotta go over, up, down, and then back over, and then down.
Yeah, I know exactly.
I know what you're talking about. It's, it's a pain, but.
I live, I live, I mean, kind of by it and them, the cars go like forty mile an hour down there, like.
I live on the opposite side of Piazza Street, so my daughter has to walk out across the street to get to the sidewalk.
I don't want to see a kid, I mean. See a kid get hurt over there.
Get the railroad, railroad to extend it on the east side of the railroad with that crossing, right?
Annette, will any of our reworking of this, the railroad crossing and stuff, address that particular issue?
Crossing at this point. I, we've got a really good relationship with the railroad, so I think there's, there's a possibility I can reach out to buy contact.
Just put a sidewalk there. I've told my kids cross right there. I'd rather cross in front of the railroad than the forty mile an hour cars. Because I don't want to see a kid get hurt.
If there, if there's no concern, we can flip it over.
Yeah.
Just the, the rest of the way to work on that road, we have talked on both parks and city council that. We know there's subdivisions up there that don't have sidewalk yet and there will be more. That's going to be one of the next high priority kind of spurs. The concept is walkability. You could get from anywhere in. In the city to school safely and get from anywhere in the city to our parks safely, so.
Like I said, it's only one yard, the whole way to school, which in the summer, I don't care if my kid walks through that guy's grass not to get, to not get in. But in the winter, with the snow, you're.
Yep, yep. Anything else anyone would like to bring up? I will close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Citizen comment.
Close citizen comment.
I do have public here.
You just, I wonder why. Been doing public. That's okay, you, yes.
Make a motion to close citizen comment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Justin, I.
John, I.
Jeff, I.
We are adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming. Thank you. I hope you saw some good reasons to come back. We are, we are, we always have stuff on the agenda to talk about.